Floor to for people to ask questions, which is timed on a reasonably orderly manner. Three succinct questions at a time and no debate that will be Wednesday. Kiora, who would like to go first? Timothy.
Um, is this being livestreamed?
Yes.
I don't think it is, is it?
Does it say?
It is councillor, it's. It's being livestreamed right now.
Yeah, oh great, cool. Okay, first three, um, so I've sent these in in written form, but I'll just um, read them out. So my first one was, will this draft deliver the reduction in emissions predicted for the spatial plan in Tiata Kura?
Uh, Kiora, um councillor Paul, uh, yes, so the the uh draft plan has been um drafted. Uh, based on the uh targets of the council in both the spatial plan and Tiata Kura. So that includes um, so it's quite significant changes to the planning settings around upzoning. Um, and what you'd see in the draft district plan is a reflection of what's in the spatial plan in terms of zoning. Um, and in addition to that, so that's higher density development around um key public transport routes and centres. So the intent there is to reduce the need to um travel in private vehicles. Um, we've also removed uh the requirements for onsite car parking other than mobility car parking. So that's in line with the national policy statement um on urban development. And the, there is also much greater emphasis in the plan around um. Uh, public trans-, use of public transport and alternative transport modes, so micro mobility, so bikes, scooters, all of that. So we're actually um, we're now requiring um provision of bike parking in new developments. Um, and all of that is in line with, as I said, the spatial plan in Tiata Kura. Uh, and that will all help to reduce the city's carbon emissions.
Cool, um, thank you. And then my se-, my, my two, my second and third questions are around the housing shortfall. So, um, I think the most up-to-date stats that I've seen are that we had a shortage of four thousand. Six hundred and fifty-two houses as of twenty sixteen, si-, as a citywide figure. Do we know what the kind of most up-to-date figures are now in terms of our undersupply of housing?
No, we don't have an up-to-date figure on that.
Can we assume that it's a lot more or less, or that figure seems to fluctuate over years? So what assumptions can we make for, because that was five years ago, so I just think to have that information is really important.
Yeah.
When we're making a plan for the next three decades.
It's probably safe to assume it would be more than that, yes, but I don't ha-, we don't have exact figures around that.
So, okay, I guess my last question would be, does that mean that our district plan that we're putting out for consultation on Wednesday. Will maintain that shortfall? Or so uh maintain a shortfall that's worse than what was predicted in twenty sixteen?
No, I don't, I don't agree with that. Um, so the um draft plan has been based on the um findings of the housing. And business capacity assessment that was done in twenty nineteen, which looks at future housing shortfall, so over a thirty-year period. So the um draft plan has been drafted on that basis that we need to um change the planning settings considerably. To um ensure that we are providing more supply in the housing market. Of course, the district plan is just one part of that. Um, there's other factors that um are are part of the whole picture. So um land costs, construction costs, those kinds of things. So um I I think we're confident that the um draft plan will address that future shortfall.
Okay, just a lot, a very small quick follow-on to those. Um, when will we, when are we expecting to get? Concrete evidence on that shortfall? Cause five-year-old data, even though their HBA is is from twenty nineteen, the data's from twenty sixteen. So when will we actually have that information?
Councillor, I think our objective first is get the plan out for consultation and get the settings right for the proposed plan um May-June next year. And between now and then, we're doing the analytical work to understand what that um shortfall is. Um, but at this stage, it's just um hasn't been um, we haven't been able to um make the calculation. Because of course, we've been through the spatial plan and now we're into the draft district plan um consultation process. So subject to community input and input from councillors and all the other government agencies interested in in our planning of the city. Um, we've been waiting for the dust to settle and get into a proposed stage, so that legitimate legalistic proposed district plan. And then we'll be able to run some numbers, but the work starts now from an analytical point of view, because we're getting closer and closer to the ground. Um, and we're able to be a lot more confident um about what that supply forecast could look like.
So we'll have that before it goes out for the notified process in May?
The intention is to have, to have the figure ready for a proposed um notification of the plan in May, May-June, I think it's June, sorry.
Yeah, because I just think it has really heavy implications on what it is that councillors need to do with the plan. Or what we need to be communicating to the community about whether this meets housing demand now or not.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Like councillor Young and councillor Calvert, of course you can ask a question too if you want.
Uh, so it just comes back to, um, this is about building heights. So I was going through the questions and answers um that you've very helpfully supplied. And um I had asked two questions and um and one, it said, within a fifteen-minute walking catchment. Of the edge of the city's uh centre zone, building heights of six stories are enabled outside of the character area. And then the next she asked another question, it says, the MPSUD requires the district plan to 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 enable development of at least six stories. So you've got one answer saying six stories are enabled and the next one says um at least six stories. So I'm, again, I'm confused.
So the MPS does require that we enable at least six stories. The draft district plan, and Tim, you can chime in here if I'm incorrect, uh outside of the character precincts. The draft district plan sets a maximum building height of six stories, so we are still enabling six stories.
So sorry, can you just go through that? So in in a character area?
So within the character precincts, the maximum height is um three stories, which is the current um maximum height limit. Under the current district plan and that, so that's the same in the draft plan within character precincts. Outside of those areas, it's a medium density zone and the maximum height limit is six stories. So that enables, that meets the requirement of the MPS, which is to enable at least six stories.
So then why does it say the district plan to enable development of at least six stories? Cause at least six stories is is not the same as six stories.
I mean, essentially, it's a, it's setting what is the permitted height limit. So we we have to permit at least six stories, up to six stories. The outcome is exactly the same, that a six-story building is permitted, subject to a design guide process in the medium density zone. You can apply to go above the six stories, that would be through a resource consent and then the assess, the effects of going over six stories would be assessed. But what we are doing is aligning with the MPS and saying six stories is permitted within the medium density zone.
So, so on the question of alignment, it would be helpful if this was all aligned so people aren't confused. So you're using the same language the whole time, because otherwise, you know, I mean, it's uh, most people are not planning experts, but it is very confusing. I mean, why not say uh in both things of at least six stories rather than are enabled? Because it's just very muddling.
Sure, I think the the plan itself, I'm not actually sure what you're reading from directly there, but in the plan.
Question and answers to councillors.
Right, okay. Yeah, it's in the draft district plan itself, the height limits are very clear, I think.
So, so that what makes my my blood run a little cold is the I think, because um most people are not planning experts. And I just think we have to make sure that we are absolutely consistent uh and that everything is aligned to use.
Yeah, I mean, in the dra-, draft district plan maps, there are the heights shown for each area. So the permitted heights are shown on the district plan map, so that's where it is very clear what is, what are the permitted heights that are clearly shown on the maps.
Okay, so could I just do a a plea for any written stuff to be as clear as the maps sound as they may be?
Yes, councillor, we'll have a look at the Q and A's. We, I believe we're putting them on the website as well, is that correct, staff? So we 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 will make sure that's crystal clear um for you.
I see them out on Thursday afternoon.
Q and A's will see Thursday, yeah.
Clarity is good, thank you. Thank, thank you, Nicola, I think it's an important point. Councillor Calvert and then councillor Fong, thank you.
So, so I'm just trying to get my video back. Um, look, it's just following on from councillor Paul's comments about asking about what we, what shortage of homes we have currently. Because it's really important that we actually have, we can make evidence-based decisions. So I know personally, I've been asking for this information for a number of months now, still. And I know we are doing a housing and building assessment, I I appreciate, we did one in two thousand and nineteen. But that was before the national policies um statement on urban development, when things um in terms of um planning rules um changed. So when um you say you're going to have this information for us by April next year, is that including an updated housing and building assessment?
Yes, so the the housing and business assessment is being updated, that's, we're required to do that under the MPS.
So when will that be um completed?
Well, we've already lodged um the HBA for this round, but just take councillors a couple of steps back. Remember, w- we can only do those forecasts based on the current planning settings. And what you're looking at to go out to consultation at the moment is markedly different to what our current plating seti-, planning settings do. So the information, that's why I made that comment earlier councillor, um it's not going to be until we're ready to go. On the full proposed district plan, ready for starting that statutory process, we will be in a good position to tell you what that actual yield will be. Um, going forward, because it is not statutorily in effect. So right here, the spatial plan, we've just signed off, we've got a general sense of of what the scale of development will look like over the city. We're going to a draft district plan now, where it's not quite game time, it's a pre-season game, if you like. Um, and then we're going to go back in June and take um after consultation, after all the feedback from the community. A more solid um and proposed plan to start that statutory process. But the HBA won't be able to reflect that until that's uh legally proposed. So when, as I said before, we'll be doing our forecasting uh assessments as we um go through the consultation phase. And I hope in June, we'll have a better, more clearer picture for what that housing deficit looks like for the city.
Uh, we're talking round in circles here, housing, the housing and uh is a business or building assessment, what we call an HBA. Um, um, I thought would have been updated, regardless of whether we were doing our district plan review or not. Would have been updated with the new policy settings um um outlined by government last year in the national policy statement. Which was, I think, August twenty twenty. So, you know, regardless of the net district plan. Why haven't we been able to get that housing and building assessment updated?
To be clear councillor, it has been updated, but it's updated to the current planning settings.
So it's been updated, so you you're talking about one in two thousand and nineteen. So when, how have you got an updated one from two thousand and nineteen?
So we're not quite clear what you're asking.
Well, you 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 did one in two thousand and nineteen, but that was before the MPS came out. On urban development, which required um, you know, um, um buildings to be built with no car parks, off-street um car parks. Um, talked about um rapid transit um and that sort of thing. And so just wondering, what have you done since that, since a year ago? In terms of updating the the existing housing and building assessment?
So, yeah, just to again, to pick up on what Liam's saying, it's based, we're required to do it based on the current uh planning settings, which we have done. And um when we update the the HBA the next uh in two thousand and twenty-four, it'll be based on the planning settings at that time. Which will be the provisions we're now going through a consultation process with and get finalized uh through the district plan process.
So, so we've got one from two thousand and nineteen, a year before the MPS came out. And so your next one is going to be round about April twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
Well, yeah, we'll be notifying uh in the middle of next year, that's right. Um, but again, they uh, there is a process to go through, hearings, those those settings might change through that process. But we expect it to be finalized around about two thousand and twenty-four. And that can align with the new, the requirement to have the, an updated HBA at that stage.
So we're, so you're basically saying we're not updating our HBA from two thousand and nineteen until twenty twenty-four?
Um, I think you've hit the answer councillor.
I I know, but it's it's woolly, I'm ju-, I'm just trying to understand is, when is the next HBA dated? Just tell me, it's two thousand and nineteen, the current one, what is the next one going to be?
Yeah, so we've, we've done the update, but it's not um based on any change in our planning settings, because they haven't changed. But the next one will be in two thousand and twenty-four and we will be able to update it based on our changed planning settings at that point.
And and that's the, sorry, but the updated one, is that the twenty nineteen one or is there another one that I'm not aware of?
It's based on that, yes, because that's our current planning settings. And there's some um updates, minor updates around um market changes and that sort of thing, but not a substantive change.
Can we see, can, can you, uh, you just send some, us the link to that updated one, that would be great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much councillor Fong and then councillor Fitzsimons.
Um, Kiora, all, thank you for the work, it's, it's huge. Um, so I've got lots of questions, but I'll start with a few. Um, the first one will be, um, so what percentage of inner suburbs are now covered by um character protections? Or um character housing? Can I just rattle off my questions first?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, and um how would we describe this plan as going to enable u- urban agriculture? Or urban farms or a sustainable food system? And just a a more of a technical question um on paragraph number sixty-five. It talks about infrastructure constraints in point two. If um, and it says, it says that these controls, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, there will be a need for alternative solutions if there isn't infrastructure investment. Or three waters investment in a zone that is applying. So the question to that is, can you give me um examples of what alternative solutions might be in that case? Or what did you mean by that?
So coming to your first question, um, we, I don't have the figures in front of me around the um percentage of character protection. But we can get that information to you. Um, your second, I didn't quite catch your second question, I'm sorry councillor, around um, so urban farms and sustainable food?
Yeah, so how will the, how will the draft district plan um speak to how we are enabling our um sustainable food system? Urban agriculture, urban farms, for example.
Yeah, so uh it's it's not directly, I don't think it's directly addressed in the, in the district plan. And that is something that is, would sit outside. I don't think the plan would necessarily prevent someone from doing that if they wanted to. Um, but it's, it's, we still have a rural zone, for example, I know that's not urban, but um we do still have a rural zone, which would enable. Um, probably at a bigger scale, some, some type of um farming agricultural use.
I think just quickly, I was just checking um councillor Fong, sorry. So you, just to be really clear, you don't need a resource consent for a community garden?
That's correct, you don't, yeah.
But I think councillor, councillor Fong, I think is interested in like, if you want to set up more farms like on Hospital Road, is that going to be possible? And are we going to provide for it?
At the moment, the, the plan goes as far as as permitting community gardens. So that's obviously where someone, where where a neighbourhood could, could use a site and grow vegetables. Um, the only limit is that it doesn't become a commercial operation. Now, the plan is silent on what level of animals could be there, I think we'd have to give that more thought. But generally, the idea is that those type of things are enabled. Um, at the moment, the community garden would only enable, if you like, growing of of vegetables in a community sense, but not, not in any commercial way. No, but no, no.
Okay, um, just to note, there was a um a workshop done way back in the early days of planning for growth. So can I ask that we can just note that and check the outcomes and that we've married those up? I'll take it offline if that, if that's better, yeah.
And just your final question councillor Fong, um relating to infrastructure. So I assumed that you were referring to the the committee report, the paper? Yes. Um, so basically what the um draft plan is proposing is a a a new chapter. Um, which addresses the three waters issues that the city has. So um if you recall through the spatial plan process, we um tried to address this issue by um proposing some sequencing of. Um, development and infrastructure, so that we're not, um, because whilst we're, we're zoning everything we signaled through the spatial plan, bar karori. Um, we know that we have significant constraints across the city in terms of three waters um capacity. So what we're trying to do through the district plan is have a, have some policy direction around how those things can be aligned. So um, so not saying you cannot do development if you're in an area that is constrained. But that you, um, if the capacity isn't available in that area, an alternative solution may need to be established. And that could be um stormwater retention, um, you know, in tanks. So that it can be released at an appropriate time when the system's under less pressure, um, or similar solutions.
Thanks. And did you get your character, did you get your character um question answered? Sorry for my mistake.
I'm just hoping that they, yeah, will the answer be able to come back before Wednesday, Kate?
Yes, yes, we can, I just don't have the data in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Fong, uh, sorry, not councillor Fong, councillor Fitzsimons, another F.
Yeah, I am here, you probably can only see my hands, but I promise I'm all.
It's a lovely view, thank you.
Hey, um, I just want to first of all acknowledge how much work's gone on, that's, it's um incredible, like, really, really detailed and dense work. Um, and I don't think my questions made it through, so I forwarded them to Kate. Um, but one of my ones is really around um home businesses and the sort of cynicism and limits to home businesses in the plan. Which I'm just wondering about whether that needs updating in a kind of COVID world. And I just, some of the stuff, um, some of the restrictions, like requiring external storage of materials to be, from the home business to be screened, didn't really make sense. And as much as I could understand others like not running a car dealer, I, I just kind of wondered if, it didn't feel very modern. And now, is there, is, can you comment on that? Is that a choice?
Yeah, I mean, that, that again, that is in the current plan, but I know what you're saying is, do we need to look at it again? I guess it's dealing with the outcomes, if we take your car business, for instance, where they store a whole lot of junk in the back garden or or the nature. And it's where the, 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 the level of what that, that business is could actually be quite, quite visually obtrusive. If it was all stored outside in the back garden, it might not be in all cases, but for some home business, depending on the product is, it could be an issue. So um, so the idea is that you keep it either in your house or in the garage or or that it's screened. Um, but it said for a lot of businesses, it wouldn't necessarily constrain them.
Hmm, so I'm just wondering if we can be a bit more permissive or think, if you could have a think about that?
You can have a think.
Yeah, just because I think that in COVID, like, people are going to be working from home and that is going to mean also home businesses operating in different ways. And I, we can still restrict car dealerships, right, without having unintended consequences on others? Cool, okay, the other one, um, well, I've got a few, but one of the ones I was going to ask about is um the design guides. And I got contacted by an architect who took me to their office and showed me all of the Melbourne design guides. And they had really what I thought were quite useful pictures. And so I'm interested in that and I'm interested in the context of how we make building more housing more open for people other than established developers. So how do we make it easy for people to understand what they can do and how they can do it? And I know that lots of people will understand pictures better than words, so is there more we can do on that?
Yeah, I understand the the question and perhaps frustration around there not being um enough pictures. Um, but we do have to be careful that we're not saying that there is only one way of doing something. So what we've tried to do through the new design guides is to have more flexibility than what the current design guides have. So that would actually allow someone who maybe isn't established but has a really great idea, something innovative, to come to council and say, look, it doesn't meet all of the standards. But this is a way that we could still achieve a really good outcome and have that conversation. So I think we just have to be really careful of saying this is a hard and fast way of of doing that. Um.
Have you guys, are you guys familiar with the Melbourne one? I don't know if that's like completely normal and like, okay, so, because, yeah, because what they did was just suggestions. It wasn't like, here's a rule, it was like, here's what's more likely to be okay, here's what isn't, here's what looks quite bad. And I was quite, I found it quite compelling, particularly in terms of accessibility. Like, they really drilled down into what is accessible and what is more likely to be. And I also thought that that's a good way of reducing cost, because if you have a sense and a guidance.
Yeah, I I have, I did pass your question on to Farz, who was leading the design guides. And um so uh he, he has acknowledged that there might be some room for some more images in there. And that's something perhaps we could look at after the consultation before we put the proposed plan out.
Cool, all right. And my other question really is around the four options for more affordable housing. Has there been much analysis of whether that will actually achieve that? Because I've seen a bit of cynicism and scepticism from some commentators. And although I know, you know, it's, we definitely want to go there and I know that there's a lot of goodwill and enthusiasm for that. But how can we get some modelling done or assessment done about whether those suggestions are likely to lead to the outcomes that we're seeking?
Yeah, so that, that work would be done um post-consultation, I think it's fair to say at the moment, we, we just want to get feedback.
Yep.
See on whether this is something we should pursue further in the district plan. So that work will need to be done if we do progress it into the proposed plan.
Cool. And my final question really is whether the councils receive legal advice about whether the draft district plan is consistent with the MPSUD. Um, and the MPSFM and can, can we please have it as the decision-makers?
So uh we've had um all of our chapters, all the key chapters have been looked at by um our, our legal advisers. We don't have a, a legal opinion as such, but um we're confident that what we've, what we've, what we've got in the draft is consistent. And gives effect to national direction as we're required to do.
So is there any, does there exist in council, any written legal advice about the district plan's consistency with those two MPSs?
No, I don't think it's been specifically asked for councillor, but I mean, if that's uh some confidence or a guarantee the council would like, I'm sure we could ask a legal advising team to see whether they'd want it to provide.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be interested in if they said, look, this is a bit on the edge. And it's not, I mean, I know it's not a hard and fast rule, no one's going to be able to predict it. But if they said, look, this is a bit on the edge, you might want to think about going in this direction or opening up there. I think it'll be quite helpful for us to see that. And as you said, that could happen as the consultation occurs as well, but.
So just for clarity, I mean, we had two legal teams um working alongside the planners um from the outset pretty much. And there was certain review points, as each chapter fell, um it went through a review with the legal team. Um, so it's, it had that lens, that check, if you like. Um, but no, we haven't asked specifically for them, can you certify this plan as legally correct or not? Um.
I just, it's not, not legally correct in every sense, because that's, I know that's subjective.
There'll be lots of grave.
But I'm really meaning in relation to the MPS.
For the MPSUD, yeah, sure, we could, we could ask them to see if they provide a statement, John, yeah.
Okay, and I think my final question really is probably just one of those ones that more work needs to be done on. But I am quite interested in what steps the council can take to enable less established developers to take an active role in building more housing. And I, and I guess I'd be quite interested in creative suggestions for that. Um, both in the hands of the council, but also in the hands of the government or Kainga Order, even if they're sort of quite new and different. So um I know that financing of over six stories, I think, is a limit. Um, but I guess I'm interested in advice on what else could we do to get new developers into building more houses?
Can I answer it from a district plan perspective, uh just generally saying that um what we're trying to do through the draft plan is to be a lot more enabling. So um, you know, we'd, we'd, I guess we'd welcome new developers if they wanted to to go down that route. And as I said before, we've tried to um create a, a more, an environment where um it's a conversation between the council and the developer early on. In the process, um, so try and get some, some good outcomes and and work together on that. Um, outside of the district plan, Liam, you might have some other thoughts?
Yes, so councillor, it's, it's important to understand the spectrum here, so that the regulatory armour is enabling and facilitating development occur. At the other end, just reminding councillors, you know, we have the Bill Wellington team.
Yeah.
So we have, of course, housing development um run by John. So we have, of course, housing development run by John McDonald, who's running the Te Kainga program for key workers. There's a thousand dwellings in five years to be delivered there. That's from a joint venture arrangement with developers. And then we have city development under Phil Becker. And their role is kind of a bit of a chase and embrace. They're out there trying to warm developers up who may be only commercial or maybe only industrial minded and get them to realise the potential for their lands. They're quite active in that sense. And I think one of the encouraging aspects and real legitimate opportunities are revolving in those sort of brownfield areas around the city. The Bus Barns is a good example, also Johnsonville itself with Stride Developments. This is where Phil Becker's team and city development are actively working to try to get these more retail or commercial focused developers to innovate and go into mixed use, including housing.
Yeah. And to be clear, I'm also interested in how we support residents who could enable, you know, more housing on their land. Like so how, because I know we get a lot of queries as councillors about that.
Dead investors, yeah, sure. So my last comment there would be the pre-application phase. A lot of the urban design teams, at least half of them are spent primarily working with pre-application conversations with the mum and dad investors of the city. So this might be a large block in, you know, in Kilburne where they've come in to seek some guidance and advice on density and yield. And we'll do a lot of work with them, trying to advise them on how they can maximise and optimise their site prior to them lodging a resource consent. Because often it gets quite difficult when they've lodged, their consent gets very litigious, if you like. And so we want to make sure that they've been as prepared as possible, including their draft people and their architects to be ready for the consenting period.
Which just my final question really is, is there anything that we could do in the district plan to reduce the kind of consenting or barriers or red tape for people further? Like that operates within our sphere of influence, you know, as opposed to, no, the law says this.
So we have, as I said, we've tried to be as enabling as we can be within the realms of what we can do. You know, we'd have the NPS, but we've also got other requirements under the RMA that we need to be mindful of as well. One of the things that we have been looking at is notification requirements. So where the activity is something that can be reasonably anticipated in a zone, so a house in a residential zone, we've said that could, that could happen on a non notified basis. So they would still, if it's a multi-unit, they would still need resource consent, but they can have some certainty that that wouldn't be notified. And that helps to reduce time and costs associated with development. So things like that, that's probably a key one. Anything else, Tim, that I've?
I mean, I think you've got to pitch it all again, and the standards are going to be far more enabling than they are. So one, we're allowing more and we're going to tighten up what can be assessed. So if the development is meeting the standards, then it really just comes down to how does it fit with the design guide? And that's the only consideration. There'd be no consideration of amenity effects. Where it's a meeting all the standards.
Okay.
With the notification preclusion as well.
Okay.
That should provide a lot of direction and clarity and, yeah, for that, for that development.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any free?
Yes, so I've gone back to the spatial plan, just to kind of sense check a few things that we said in that. And I noticed that on, in the spatial plan, there's something called resilience issues within 10 to 20 years. And identified in that is Kilburne and Miramar and some population numbers. What's meant by that? It's on page 41. It just says, you know, it's got the short to medium term focus, medium to long term focus, 20 plus years, and then resilience issues.
Perhaps if we start on the resilience issues with those areas.
Yeah, but it's identified in the spatial plans. So and then it's actually got figures, 17, 20, you know, to 3,030. And that's population and then dwelling 687 to 1,210.
Sorry, I can't comment on those numbers. But in terms of the resilience issues for Kilburne and Miramar, that they are well known and they're well documented. And that's why in terms of Kilburne, we haven't extended the full walking catchment around Kilburne because of those resilience issues. So that's where the NPS requires Kilburne to be, have a greater six story zone. But we have reduced that, and that was part of the spatial plan direction, that because of the hazards there, that's a qualifying matter. So those are the resilience issues that are relevant. But in terms of those numbers, sorry, I, yeah.
But despite the resilient issues.
Have you got, have you got a document in front of you?
I have indeed.
What, what page are you on?
I'm on page 41.
So I think what you're looking at there is the growth in infrastructure investment. So the years that you've got there around, we've provided a signal around when that investment in infrastructure would happen. In terms of Kilburne and Miramar, so it's signaling that those, that investment would happen in a 10 to 20 year period. And that is because of resilience issues in those areas. So I think that's the answer question.
It's helpful. Thank you. So it's an investment to protect those many houses?
So it's an investment in the infrastructure needed to deal with things like stormwater. And I would imagine in particular in those two areas.
All right. It's not wonderfully clear if you're not sort of really over that type to say. The other thing I wanted to ask coming from the spatial plan is it refers to methods that are going to be used for age friendly design. What sort of things are you anticipating you'll be able to do for age friendly design and high density areas?
So where did you?
And that's again in page 25. I just want to know how this is reflected in our district plan.
So the, the design guides in particular would be an area that we would be, that we're trying to encourage that. So universal accessibility is a concept that's quite strong in the design guides. So that is ensuring that new developments are designed for those with mobility issues. And that would include people who are older and might, might not necessarily be able to get upstairs and that, and that kind of thing. So I think that's, particularly through the design guides that we've been. They would require lifts in any case if they're four stories and over. The building, the building act requires that.
Yes.
Okay, is that all, Sarah? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Day, thank you.
Kia ora. Man, what a piece of work you guys have produced. It's amazing. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions regarding the amendment that councillor Conde and I put forward in the spatial plan regarding a couple of things that we wanted to see informed through the district plan. So one was about the walking catchment and how it differed from the NDRA determination. And then also the review of the open and green space to inform the district plan. So where those two things got to. And then I've got a question about the glen side part as well.
So I think some of the answers I gave to councillor Young at the beginning, which is around, you know, the update, updating the walking catchment model meant that the changes to particularly Johnsonville, because we used a walking catchment there, but it was based on 2011 modelling. And of course, there was an environment court decision which modified a few of the areas too. So and then with the update to the walking catchment model, we think we're confident now that we have an appropriately represented 10 minute walking catchment for around Johnsonville Centre.
Okay. And just then also that, I guess, the open and green space, was that sort of planning up to for Johnsonville?
Through, Madam Chair, I think councillor, well, we've got the Green Network Plan, which of course is just central city focused. I think the planning for Johnsonville in terms of its green network hasn't really started yet outside from the central Johnsonville Metropolitan Centre ranking. The master planning going on there is well underway with Stride, city development, the urban design team. Just a little bit to finish actually on John's earlier question. Councillors, you know, from 2011 was when we did the last walking catchments. But of course, with a lot of the smart city improvements that we've been doing with Wellington City Council over time, our GIs team and their capabilities have become quite formidable. And so as a result, we've been able to identify parts of our network that, and using both the geographical information systems and a lot of our roading and legal networks, we've identified quite an increased degree in permeability for our neighbourhoods as well, which is the additional level of detail the planners have been doing down on the ground, which is understanding not just from the legitimate road network, the streets and roads that allow for walking to occur, but identifying also some of our rights of ways and easements where roads have been discontinued, but they're still open for public access. So the level of rigor in terms of a walking catchments, aside from John's comment earlier about the topography of Wellington and its unique nature, it is much, much higher than the 2011 work. And as a result, we have a more refined walking catchment across our city.
So thank you. And just back to the open space one though. So how will that inform the district plan? Because obviously that needs to be planned for, particularly in Johnsonville, where it's sort of a little bit hard to influence.
Can you hear?
Just to be clear councillor, are you interested also in the Granada North Lincolnshire Farms open space network? Or more specifically for Johnsonville?
It's really more for Johnsonville because it's a built up area. And already, you know, we're having a lot of people saying, you know, we have, at the moment, if you're at the Johnsonville Mall, like there's only a couple, there's probably really one main space you can go to, to sit outside to have your lunch. And, you know, like with the development opportunities, there are really good opportunities to just make sure that the space that's put into developments could be.
I see. No, absolutely. So I mean, that's, yeah, that's right. That's, I mean, that's really well on our radar. And that's the work I mentioned before with Phil Becker and the urban design team, but city development, but also importantly, the stride company that own the balance, their master planning Johnsonville at the moment. So we're hoping those urban design outcomes are a much better outcome than currently there.
But I guess even further out afield, because it's going to be much more intensified being a metropolitan zone, there's a risk that we haven't necessarily made a plan for some of the areas that currently don't have a green space.
Yes, councillor, and I'll acknowledge that risk. It's just not at this stage. We haven't been able to do any real detailed neighbourhood planning for Johnsonville. But similar to what we're doing with the inner city and the green network plan, and I've foreshadowed this to councillors a number of times, we need to understand what that deficit might be in Wellington's context. And the green network plan will bring both opportunities to council for approval in terms of how we're going to claw back that deficit of open space. And you've seen some early workshops on that. We hope to be able to extend that with the PSR team, Park Sports and Recreation, to provide a bit of a city envelope as we densify over time, particularly in our town centres. But at the stage that work hasn't yet been done.
Yeah, and especially just the metropolitan centres like that. I mean, they will essentially look quite, quite different to how they do now, won't they, potentially?
So just to Liam, in terms of the district plan, I think we've briefed you on this, what we call city outcomes contribution. So that is a requirement that whether you're in the metropolitan centre of Johnsonville or central city or another suburban centre, you'll be required, the developer will be required to set aside a proportion of private open space or community space, one or the other. So it might be that it might not be appropriate to have a deck on every apartment in an apartment block, but that you had created communal space. So that's a direct contribution. Plus, there will also be development contributions required. But those are the sort of things we need to, that will play out through the consenting process. So there is the ability to collect development contributions. And ultimately, that goes back into providing for parks and open space.
Can, can we require that like a large housing development, you know, like a large apartment? If they've got, if they manage to attain multiple sections that currently are separate, that their public space can be public, sorry, their open space could be public? Can we require that?
In the instance where we've planned for it, yes, we can. And because obviously as an exchange from a public open space point of view, where it goes into public ownership, we need to, we need to pay for it. So that's where, to John's point, DCs come in. And as councillors will know, we've got a development contribution policy being updated with the current settings of the LTP. And when we go into a growth LTP in the next three years, that's when we're starting to understand what our deficit provision of open spaces across the city and how we ask development to help contribute and pay for that. But it's not, it's not part of this DC review. And John made another good point. I missed that councillor. You know, the city outcomes component of the district plan is looking for large scale developments to contribute on top of DCs and various other matters, public outcomes or city outcomes to the, to the city. You can have a private realm that is often accessed by the residents of that development, but also adjacent to the public realm where it can be pseudo open space, if you like. So that's the city outcomes part of the district plan. And we hope that's also going to add and create some additionality to our open space network.
Can, I guess the other question is, can you incentivize developments having publicly available space?
Yeah, so that's what I'm referring to. So the city outcomes policy is a way to encourage developers to push the envelope. And we let them to do that. We will allow them to push the envelope, provided they are also giving something back to the city.
Yeah. And just the last question is a quite a quick one about the glen side and upper Stebbings area. I'm just looking at the maps and for the glen side area, it looks like the streams, there's a stream that comes out of two of the streets. Is that correct? Because then it would sort of feel like we're building streets on top of them before that bit. They've got like a grey line tracking out. Is that just acknowledging that those streets will, the water will run off there and then form those streams? It just, it's quite, it stands out quite a bit. And I think people might notice that.
Yeah, we might have to get back to you on that detail. But I mean, we have looked at that area. I think, I think I know the area you're referring to.
It's got the three prongs.
Yeah.
And out of two of the prongs, it's got like the grey line tracking down and going down the hill. But I just, yeah, it looks to me, I sort of interpret that as the rest of the streets built on top of the stream. But it may be that, that the way the land goes, that that may form into, I don't know.
I think that'd be a good Q and A councillor. So Lucy's not here. She's been developing that structure plan for us and Chalata is looking at the maps now. But it might be better that we get back to you in writing if that's okay.
Yep, sure. Thank you.
All right. I'll just ask my three questions now. First of all, team, thank you so much for all the work that you've done. It's absolutely massive. So it's very much appreciated. So my first question is around Manu Fenua. Look, it's brilliant that we've made the step. I have read the whole plan and, and I did struggle with, you know, when you talk about food harvesting, it's very obvious kind of what it means. But when you talk about, oh, you recognise the status or they'll have a role, it's just a bit vague. And I just, I just, and also the other thing about that is that the Manu Fenua perspective is not in every chapter and every provision where you might actually think that that's relevant. So my question is, how are we going to be clear what this actually gives our treaty partners? And are you confident that, you know, every sort of environmental issue where we think we would have a Tiamari perspective, that's been covered off?
Yes, we are confident. And the reason for that is because we've worked directly with Manu Fenua on every single chapter. So what you see in the draft plan is a reflection of those conversations. So they have directed us in that regard. So and in terms of not outlining a specific process, that is because it will be a case by case. So Manu Fenua or Ewi might not want to be involved in every single resource consent, for example. So what it does is it's a trigger for an initial conversation around, hey, we've received this proposal. Is this something that is going to be of significance for you? Do you want to be involved in this process? And, and so that's the starting point. So we've been very careful not to prescribe processes because it will be directed by Manu Fenua.
Okay. And I presume under the RMA reform, that you might envisage a slightly different process? Because the RMA is still quite a constraining one.
Potentially. And I think the, one of the, oh, Adam, have you got a response there?
Kia ora. Yeah, what I was going to say is like, we've had sort of a skeleton outline of what the new system might look like in terms of Manu Fenua involvement in the planning system. And that all that we've seen to date is there is a lot of involvement with Manu Fenua on those planning committees. At the time, the plan's being developed, but not a lot else. So this is doing a pretty huge step change.
So this is doing a pretty huge step change from what we have now to actually bringing Mano Fenua into that resource consenting process and having those face to face discussions. But the the big picture there is that the government's not likely to miss this opportunity to to see what we are doing and incorporate those sorts of elements into a new system. So I think this is only setting us up to be pretty future proofed.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Well, they're happy. Now, population figures. Can I just go back to this? So the fifty to eighty thousand, is that S E N S partners work? And are we going to hear from them? Because I thought we were going to have a workshop with them?
So the fifty to eighty thousand, as you know, is is a figure that we was based originally on medium to high growth over the next thirty years.
Was that from S E N S or Stats?
That's from Stats. So thereabouts, I mean, and so S E N S partners is taken over from our other demographers that we had. Their figures are slightly on the slightly on the higher side, but still within the range of that fifty to eighty thousand. So we, so the settings that are in the spatial plan and transferred through into the district plan are consistent with the things that we have been talking about with our population. So and these things do change over time and we are required through the N P S. And we do anyway, when we review the district plan and our settings is to constantly look at what's happening in terms of population growth and adjust our planning settings according to that. But just to go back to your original, your question, of course, we are, we're confident that we have the settings right in the district plan to, and that's consistent broadly with the S E N S partners work.
So just to be absolutely clear, this is just stats data and what, and we look at it, but we haven't added anything on to stats data.
So the fifty to eighty is, is was, the eighty was Stats high. And those are the consistent messages we've given throughout. The S E N S partners information, which you'll get a briefing on, is broadly consistent with that, probably more towards the high with the medium. So and we, that's consistent with the settings we have in the draft district plan.
When's that briefing?
Yeah, I think they've just briefed E L T and that only happened last week.
No, yeah, that didn't, it didn't happen in the end. So look, we haven't arranged or are planning to arrange a briefing with you on the S E N S partners, I don't recall. But happy to if it's needed.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that would be super helpful. Thank you. And my last question for now, won't be surprised, John, I'm very interested in notification clauses. So I did take quite a careful look at that when I was reading the plan. So it looks like, for example, let's just on a superficial look, it looks like the, like say demolition of a pre nineteen thirty building. There's no restriction around the notification clauses, but when you go through to the draft, there is. So I guess I'm just trying to understand how much restriction you put on notification in this new plan compared to the the other one.
I mean, over the whole plan, I don't think we've added restriction on notification from what what the current plan has. We've very much followed the same approach and tried to provide clearer notification clauses and more restriction against public notification. But in terms of the character area issue raised, notification, public notification shouldn't, I would need to check, this shouldn't be precluded for demolition of a building in a character area. No, no.
Yes, but it's just when I compare them, it does look like it. So I guess for me, I I did find it a bit confusing because you've essentially got to look at every section to see what the notification provisions are. Is it possible in the statutory version to actually have a summary table there?
Yeah, we'll take some, take some advice on that, I think. You know, again, we're following a national planning template here, councillor, so we would have to take advice and get back to you.
Yeah. And look, I do appreciate the clearer language, but I still think it's quite a tricky document to navigate through. Obviously, I'm saying it's not your problem. You didn't set up a template. Right, now we are going to second round of questions now. So councillor Paul.
Cool, thank you. So I just wanted to understand the daylight stuff a bit more. So the two hour kind of minimum for the habitable rooms, like is this, how normal is that internationally? And I guess what would be the impacts of reducing that requirement or increasing it?
So I'm not sure internationally how common it is, but I can tell you it is in the current design guide. So it is in the current plan, but it sits in the design guide. There's a requirement for four hours sunlight to habitable rooms. So we are reducing it, but we are bringing it into the plan as a standard. So effectively taking it out of the design guide, reducing the amount of time and including it as a standard in the plan. There are building code requirements for for natural light, but this is setting a slightly higher bar than the building code. And that's because our design team are experiencing poor outcomes where habitable rooms don't have access to natural light. They have what's called borrowed light. So we think it's an important requirement. And we are having all of these standards tested at the moment. So at the moment, we've got an architecture firm doing developments across six sites and we're waiting for their feedback on on these standards to make sure they're workable. And I'm sure, of course, the development community will be keen to get their views. And I'm sure they'll be commenting on standards that they don't think work or standards that are workable.
And just to add to what Tim said, it's also important to make the distinction between sunlight and daylight. So all we're suggesting in the draft district plan is that you have, as Tim said, natural light in the room. It doesn't mean direct sunlight. So there is a difference.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And I guess this kind of goes on from some of Jill's points around the amenity stuff. So the Planning for Residential Amenity Report by Botham School that came out in July, do you think this concentrates too much like amenity value in privately and that we don't really have, like could we commission a plan to look at public amenity and how that can kind of contribute to the amenity values of neighbourhoods? Because it kind of seems to me that we've put a lot of effort into private amenity. But, you know, what about public amenity and providing that as a public thing rather than expecting developers to provide amenity for neighbourhoods and and the city, if that makes sense?
I'll, I'll start. Just in terms of that buffer report, just the the pitch there or the or the brief to them was was to make sure that we were giving effect to the N P S. So it was directing them to make sure that the standards were designed so that we were compatible with the N P S. So it wasn't about protecting amenity over anything else. It was the balance between amenity and and achieving that. And just so you know, we did further internal work following on from that Botham School report. And we have actually changed the standards again, which are what in the draft plan. So for instance, one of the recession planes is now up to twelve metres. And that was because we, through our internal testing, we found that on some sites, that was limiting the ability to meet the six stories. So just important context. But the public amenity stuff does come through, one, in terms of our city outcome contributions, but also the design guides as well. That's about how a development will look from the public realm. That's not solely focused on private amenity. So it's good quality for both public and private outcomes. And as I said, the city outcomes is very much focused on public outcomes.
Yeah. And just to add to that, there's also, we have also considered amenity for pedestrians in the city centre zone, so on those narrower streets. So there's, so we've, we've removed the mass, current existing mass requirement in the plan and replaced it with what we're calling a street edge height requirement. So that basically means that where you're on one of those narrow streets, so if you think the likes, those streets that come off Tory Street, so College Street along there, where someone's proposing a new development, they can build up to the street edge to, I think it's six stories, is that correct, Anna? Or is it lower? Might throw to you on this.
Yeah, so it's sixteen metres or the width of the street, whatever is.
And then it's a stepped height above that. So so they have to be set back. And that's to allow sunlight, daylight onto the street. So you're not, you know, just in a tunnel of buildings. So that is taking on board submissions we had on the spatial plan in regards to increasing building heights in the city centre.
Cool, that's awesome. And I guess just to follow up on that second question, I noticed that that report was based on our operative district plan, the Auckland Unitary Plan and New South Wales Planning Standards or Guides. I mean, do we look at, are we looking at like European and Asian cities that do density really well and have really good amenity? Like, are we looking at other examples outside of that kind of Anglo space? Or, you know, are we taking in other examples of cities who do density well?
Got it. So those places you referenced were used as case studies for comparisons of different planning settings. And the reason that they were chosen is what you refer to as they have a sort of an Anglo sort of cultural sphere and understanding. And the call was made that those, that was the right framework in which to assess or compare standards because of our planning system and its current context. But as Tim mentioned before, the the planning settings that are being proposed are a balance of growth and amenity, and they are quite different from the settings that we have now.
Because it would, I mean, I think just, just like as a brief comment on that, I mean.
Questions? Sorry. And we do have some other people. So can you make it a question?
Oh, I mean, okay, as a question, yeah, 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 as a question. I mean, can we look at other, can we look at other regions in the world who who do density well? Because I think the kind of Anglo values that come around in terms of individualisation of space and, you know, some of those planning rules that we've adopted from from America or the or the U K, for example, maybe work against the goals we need to meet in terms of a growing population, more communal values and spaces and better utilisation of space from a public and communal perspective, as opposed to those individualised kind of approaches to land use?
I might have a go. And then, Adam, you can have a crack too, because this is quite an interesting topic. It's a great question, councillor, by the way. And as we should always look to stretch ourselves and 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 see what other innovations are occurring. I think the couple of comments I'd make is there's sort of a durability component to this. It's, we've looked at those nearby examples because we know their markets, both in construction and property development work in the same way. So obviously, we don't want to create a situation where we produce a a plan that that simply has of no interest to the market to deliver. So we we've tried trying to ground ourselves slightly there. But, you know, if I have a look at our bike network plan, we've just approved a hundred and forty seven kilometres, you know, over the city in primary and secondary arterial routes. I mean, that's straight out of Central Europe, in my opinion. I mean, it's going to transform Wellington in that sense. And when we think about how the network's organised, our road network and our and our street network, it will organise the city. So when you see mode shift happening on our streets, again, parking isn't a right, it's a privilege. When those, that mode shift occurs, you'll see the city start to adapt and evolve in its design response to the mode shift. Because cities are all about how you get around it, how easy it is, how livable it is. What happens in the private realm is is how you interrelate to that, to that city that you're creating. And I say it again, I think it is one of the most profound decisions councillor may to commit to the hundred and forty seven kilometres. It will transform the city, it'll lead the city's development into the longer term in a positive way. And I think, as I say, that gesture, if you like, is very much a Central European Copenhagen, Holland type gesture. And I think that's where we'll get that, the difference in in thinking and in doing.
Awesome.
Right, councillor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Iona, Iona, that was, those were just follow ups on my second. Can I just ask the third? I know you'll appreciate, you will appreciate my third question.
Let's allow everyone else. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just going to have another finish to that point as well. Sorry. Yeah, I was just going to quickly add further to Liam's point was that if we're talking about those cities like Copenhagen, where they have, you know, four stories of terrorist housing, well designed, our settings are looking to enable that that type of development. So the the, some of the main issues we have in our city are to do with land fragmentation. But if so, if a developer chooses to assemble a range of sites, our standards are very accommodating of that that typology of housing with communal open spaces as well. So we're no longer requiring private open space, but actually enabling and encouraging developers to centralise and make that available to all residents of the building so that it's more more usable than if it were just a balcony or a terrace.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry, Iona, this, this is, sorry, the third one, and it's, it's pretty straightforward. It was just on a request from one of our workshops that we did about some kind of a simplified user guide about that kind of breakdown where people should look for different sections of the plan. I think a few councillors asked for something like that to be put out with consultation so that people can jump to areas relevant to their passion or expertise or concerns that they have. So for example, you might want to jump to like environmental or or green space or water related stuff. Or like, have we come up with some kind of an easy user guide for looking at the district plan and for the consultation?
Councillor, I can answer that one. We're working on that through the website, our Planning for Growth website. So trying to make those jumps to directly to those sort of key topic areas. And we'll align those with information sheets that we have as well to try and sort of align all of our material and make it easy for people to find the exact parts that they're interested in.
Thank you.
We'll also be developing some extra how to guide material type stuff as well.
Thank you. Right, councillor Young and councillor Calvert.
So thank you. I'm just going back to this ten fifteen minute walking thing. So what was the underlying policy that drove us to go from, that switched from ten to fifteen minutes?
Councillor, it's based on the decision that councillors made on the spatial plan back in June. So originally, officers recommended a ten minute walking catchment from the end of the city centre. And councillors resolved to extend that to fifteen minutes.
So so this sounds pejorative. It's not meant to be pejorative. But so basically, it's done a sort of policy on the wing.
Councillor, we might just, you can save it for Wednesday. That was a question, though.
Well, I think the only comment to make is that, I mean, officers, it does vary across cities. I mean, we've talked about Melbourne today. Melbourne's a very flat city. So you could argue Melbourne's walking catchments might be a lot closer, a lot, or a lot further away, depending on the topography. But I I don't think the international jury is out on whether it's fifteen minutes or twenty minutes. You often hear internationally comments around a twenty minute city. And that's where you can kind of work and play and recreate and live within a twenty minute catchment. So this is specifically about walking though. And as I said, this was, well, sorry, as Kate made the point, this was a decision councillor made, moving the ten minute walking catchment to fifteen. And, you know, in an international context, I don't think that's by any means making stuff up. I think it's in context of what other cities are developing within that ten to twenty minute range. A lot of the range depends on how car friendly or not the city is. If there's good public transport, good connectivity and and the right sort of terrain, if you like, and the right safety measures, then catchments, walking catchments can be increased and decreased depending on the the type of city you're applying them to.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Very succinct. Thank you. Councillor Calvert.
Sorry, I'm muting myself. When we approved the spatial plan, there, a report was coming back from officers about the Johnsonville Line and its capacity. Is that report available? Yes.
Just be with us, councillor. We're just trying to confer notes.
It was about whether Johnsonville Line qualified as a master of transit. I think that was part of it, wasn't it?
Um, no, well, no, it was a part, it was a, it was a resolution passed at the June meeting. And and the officers would come back to us in three months. And I request officers to report back within three months on the ability and capacity of the Johnsonville Train Line to support the planned potential population growth along the corridor, taking into account the regional council's planned future investment strategy on the line. I believe that was passed eight six.
Yeah, we, we just. Yeah, we're just checking our documents here. That's Andrew's work. So that's been submitted. We've got that as a draft internally councillor. So when it's complete and gone through this internal sign up, we'll post that.
When will that be? Because the agreement was that you do that within three months and that was in June.
Yeah, I know councillor, it's been a very busy time. So the work has been done and John's telling me probably a fortnight to sign it off once we get the consultation out. So we should be ready in about two weeks.
Well, shouldn't we have that ready with the consultation?
We'll try to councillor.
Can we see the draft?
Once I have a read of it, that'd be okay, I'm sure.
That would be really useful because it is, it is critical to this and part of the Wellington will want to know. The other thing is, and come back to you separately, the Inner Harbour Precinct area by opposite the railway station and the platforms. Can you, I couldn't see anything on the district plan about any potential land use for that other than being a port zone. Can you clarify whether that's, is there any other zoning around that?
Yeah, I can answer that. So the Inner Harbour Port Precinct has full port zone, underlying port zone. So it's all within the port zone, so that whole stretch from the Inner Harbour to the port zone and up to the multi-user theory precinct, there's port zone.
Okay. And that's the area where we're going to have the indoor arena on, I believe. So that doesn't get any sort of mixed use zoning.
I'll calculate on that, I'm not sure.
Thank you. And my next third question is just about, round about the different centres, metropolitan, local and neighbourhood. Where in the district plan can I see a list of those other than looking up the particular individual suburbs?
Adam here. So in the zone chapters themselves, so if you went to the local centre zone chapter, there's a table number, standard number one, that states where the various height areas are for the zones. That would be one useful place to look. There isn't a place in the plan where it states exactly where every single centre is, partly because we've got about 45, 46 different centres and it would be a very long list. But those height areas are easy ways to do them.
Could somebody provide us with a list of what's, you know, the difference with, you know, of what's metropolitan, what's local, what's neighbourhood?
Sure, I can provide that to you.
Okay, that's fine. I think that's, and just tell me why is, and on the draft district plan, Kilburny is noted as a metropolitan centre, but we didn't include as a metropolitan centre on the spatial plan?
So with the spatial plan, it was identified as being a metropolitan centre. The difference is that we didn't apply the MPSUD walkable catchment six storey requirements there because of the range of natural hazards present within that area. And in terms of Kilburny being a metropolitan centre, that is directed by the regional policy statement and also by an economic analysis which have been provided that set out a hierarchy of centres across the city.
Okay, so it's still a metropolitan centre. Okay, thank you.
Right, councillor Funn and then deputy mayor free.
I know that we've gone over this one quite regularly, but it would just be good to refresh again. So I just see that the Let's Get Welly Moving meeting has been postponed. How, so the question is, how will we navigate the proposed MRT routes if we need to uplift zoning on the chosen route? I've got more questions as well.
That's a really good question regardless with the meetings being postponed or not.
Apologies councillor, if anyone would just repeat your question?
With the Let's Get Welly Moving proposed MRT routes, how will we navigate this if we do need to uplift the zoning required on the chosen route?
Yeah, so that, obviously those decisions haven't been made yet, or as you know, around the route or the mode. So that, as it stands, the draft district plan is light in that regard because we don't have that certainty. So we will have to make a change, what we call a variation to the proposed district plan once those decisions have been made and we have more certainty. So a variation is just like a plan change. But it's when, it's a plan change that happens after the plan has been notified. But it hasn't yet, decisions haven't yet been made. So that is something we will have to come back and do later on.
And would that go out to community consultation? Just again, yeah, so we have to go out again, okay.
It's a more formal process councillor, so that's a, you know, it's a statutory process because you're dropping on top of an existing statutory process being the proposed plan. So it is a lot more formal and it won't have the benefit that we're having going out with a draft plan and indeed before then a spatial plan. So it would be quite specific to the route and potentially the station locations for that route.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Do we have an idea of the timing for that?
It might be, it might even be easier for some of the councillors on the GIG to answer this question, but I understand the indicative business cases are due.
Early November, I believe.
Early November, yeah. Okay, next year though. Jenny's just popping on now, she might have a bit of a sense.
Yeah. So I think, you know, the key thing to remember is that it's the station locations that activate the MPSUD, not just the route. So potentially we will have decisions about the route next year, possibly even before we notify the district plan if we're really lucky. But I'm not going to hold my breath or promise you on that one. But the key thing is that the MPSUD to kick in, it's about the station locations and that is definitely further away. And I don't know if, but not next year would be pretty much all I could tell you about that is that the station locations will take longer for them to figure out where they're going to go. And it might be more like two or even three years from now. You know, if we gave them the head, it would be three years from now. We're obviously trying to push to bring that as far forward as we can. But that's, that's just the reality is that the station locations take longer.
That's really useful in this dialogue, thank you, Jenny. And so just a couple more questions, thanks. I'll just rattle these ones off. The NPS Indigenous Biodiversity Plan, do we have any indication of what, what the likely direction will be of this and how this might impact the district plan? Also, just around hydraulic neutrality, neutrality around in multi-unit dwellings and accepting that these multi-unit dwellings will likely have to go through the design panel, is there any incentive or points for developers to exceed the hydraulic neutrality rather than just be offset? So that's one question. And then also in the design guides, the statutory weight, will the design panel decisions also carry statutory weight?
So I'll just talk about the NPS on biodiversity. No, no, we don't know what direction it will take. Obviously, we did make a submission on the draft about a year ago. And there was lots of areas that we did support, but we did have some issues with it. But look, we don't know what the final NPS will say. We will have to do a stop take of what's in the draft when that comes out. But we are, we do understand that it will be out before the end of the year. So hopefully not too far away and then we'll recheck what our rules say against it.
Okay.
And then your question around hydraulic neutrality, I don't think there's any things specific around if you exceed those requirements. But obviously, that would, that would just mean that you're meeting the standard. In fact, you are exceeding it, but yes, you wouldn't get any additional points or anything like that at this stage. Happy to hear through the consultation if that's something we should be exploring further. Oh, I see Faz is online. Maybe Faz, you might want to pick up the design panel question.
And I think in terms of hydraulic neutrality, if they can prove that contributes to sustainability of the project, they may get, they may be able to get some points. And the panel, no, the panels around the country, the urban design panels don't have a statutory role, but they will advise the statutory advisers. So they will advise the urban designer of the council and also resource consent. However, urban design panels don't have a role in the RMA system.
Thank you. Thank you, deputy mayor free.
So I've just got two questions. Guess one is just thinking about an aging population and if the 15 minute catchment to all the services is going to be multi-story, how is that going to be compatible with accommodating with the age friendly dense development that was referred to in the spatial plan? And I know you asked about lifts, but that's not, has any work been done to establish whether we're going to have enough dwellings that are actually going to be suitable for older people in places where they're going to want to live if it's all high rise?
I think the point with the proposals is to, not only are we dealing with housing supply, but housing choice. So and there's a lot of strong signals in the policies and in the design guides around accessibility and creating housing choice. So for instance, a high rise developer will have an option and it will reflect positively on them to put the accessible dwellings maybe on the ground floor, make sure there's lifts to them. And so it can build into the design of a development, those sorts of things. So I actually think this opens up a lot of opportunities for accessible housing across the city. Faz, you might have something to say further, do you think?
Yeah, so considering that 25% of the population would be, or they have some form of disabilities, our kind of goal is that to make sure that at least 25% of those residential unit will be to some extent accessible. And we included all the accessibility kind of design guides into the design guys and that's the first time. And hopefully, if we get the order aligned, we can really push for it. Also, as part of the city outcomes contribution, we included Life Mark, which is the certification process for those projects. And hopefully that will incentivise more accessible units in the bigger developments and more denser areas.
When I looked at what was likely to happen in Murma and knowing what the typologies are there at the minute, I wonder if any thought had been given to interspersing some lower, you know, some other sorts of different types of housing in that walkable catchment and rather than requiring it all to be blanket of six stories.
So just to be clear, the provisions don't require a development to be six stories. So you could go lower. So and we don't anticipate that every single site that is zoned to go six stories or more would, would be developed in that way. And the only place that we've got a minimum building height is in the city centre zone. So it's really, it's a really important distinction that we, the NPS says enable at least six stories, but doesn't require something to be built to that level. And if you've got a minimum building height, and even then, if someone wanted to go lower, they would have to apply for resource consent to do something lower, yeah.
And my other question was just about clarifying the daylight, sunlight thing. You said daylight of at least two or four hours. How are you going to measure that daylight if it's not actually sun?
Yeah, so it's daylight and you measure it through lux, so.
Okay, so there'll be a minimum lux for at least four hours. Was it four hours?
Two hours.
Two hours, a minimum lux.
Well, yeah, so you can measure daylight and daylight is measured in.
And in units of lux, yes, I do understand that. But have you got an idea what that minimum will be? And what would it equate to? Would it equate to as bright as this room? I mean, how do we know?
Yeah, effectively, I mean, effectively, it means that habitable rooms will have to have an external window. So that's effectively what the standard will require to meet that minimum two hours. Whereas at the moment, a habitable room doesn't actually need to have an external window to meet the building code, so.
Okay, I thought it was sunlight in one of the earlier versions.
Certainly in the current plan, it refers to sunlight. The standard refers to sunlight, but in the draft plan, it talks about daylight and not sunlight.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
Right, Jenny, do you have a question that you want to ask? Were you good? Still there? Okay, can I just go back to green housing? Look, thank you, I appreciate the provisions that have been included. What do you think is the likely uptake of those? Just given we can't make that mandatory and is it as strong as we can make it?
I think it probably is as strong as we can make it. Don't, everyone's nodding. So yes, I think that is as strong as we can make it. We, under the RMA, that's as far as we can go. We've done quite a bit through the design guides to enable sustainable building design and materials. And that comes through in the city outcomes contribution guidance and policy as well. Faz, did you have something you wanted to add there?
So when we, when we talk to the developers, they mentioned that I think one of the key things, the scale of those projects. So possibly we give more green style buildings through larger projects rather than smaller projects because their profit margin is larger, therefore is easier for them. And I think city outcomes contribution, as Kate mentioned, will incentivise that even more. So I think we will have an uptake of those. And I think naturally, some of the developers are moving toward that direction anyway.
Okay. And look, that's actually a very good lead on to the next question. The profit margin really is for the bigger buildings, although the high value ones. Are you confident, even with my amendment around assisted housing, that we're going to get enough housing at the bottom in the middle?
We're confident we're giving the market every possible chance to.
And if that's not enough and we don't end up with the housing that we need or we end up with some high value housing, what's the remedy?
I think reviewing your district plan every 10 years and keeping an eye on the house.
That's a long time away. All right, okay, that's interesting. And just last question for now, the, the open space issue that Jill raised, that was useful. I'm just wondering if we can publicly note that that work is still to come because obviously we're going to, it's going to be very exciting next week when we do our open space CBD one, but there's the rest of the city to think about as well. Would officers be open to that?
Within reason councillor, so, I mean, we all know from the, in terms of the planning office anyway, that as we've, we're doing the step change to the city, we need to go back into our neighbourhood levels and do some planning and do some forecasting in terms of the needs and requirements of those communities as they grow and change. And councillors, you're also familiar with the community infrastructure strategy work. We talked about that in the last LTP. We talked about as the city needs to grow, we also need to review our provision of community infrastructure across the city to ensure that we're meeting the needs of those, not only today, the residents of today, but the future residents as well. So there's still a lot of work to go. You know, I try to encourage both staff and the councillors to think that we're still at quite a high altitude here as we set our development parameters for the city. And, you know, we're starting at the right space though, which is the bird's eye strategic space and we're slowly getting down to ground level. And it is that work, that future work from a community infrastructure point of view, including open space, that is much closer to the ground and we're not quite there yet.
Okay, so you're saying that by next year, we'll know like, you know, that regional council knows if you're close enough to a bus stop, we'll know whether people have got deficits in terms of the amount of green space on their doorstep?
I don't think that's going to be that quickly, but we're going to start with the metropolitan centres first. Because there are larger centres for the most, most impact from a housing outcome point of view. And then we'll work back to our local centres.
But that means then there's a gap of time that someone might build a six story building where there's no open space and we won't get to it for some time. Get to that community.
Yeah, I mean, but that's as it stands at the moment councillor. You know, you can be as responsive as you can, enabling as you can, but those matters and issues are dealt with on a case by case basis. And as I say, that's going to happen over time. It's a finer grain of design detail that the team isn't quite ready for yet. But if, I'll take you back to an early comment I made. Remember, this LTP was all about catching up and shortening that deficit gap in infrastructure provision. And the next LTP, including the next review of the development contribution plans will be about growth and planning for growth from an infrastructure point of view.
Okay, so I just, my concern is around leaving a gap between providing for the space and then not having enough support around it. Okay, are there any final questions now? Because we just, just wanted a bit of time to go on about the consultation. Sorry, Laurie?
Sorry, yes, I have got some consultation questions.
Oh, no, no, hang on, hang on, hang on. Jane's going to talk to it first and then, then we can ask questions.
I've got two questions still for the, for the. I've got two questions still for the, for the draft district plan.
Okay, right, you go for those.
One of them is one that I asked the other day, but I would like to answer it just on the back of what councillor Pennett's been asking. When we've got green spaces, what protections will be in place to help those green spaces retain as much sunlight as possible? And what is the process we're going to go through to understand that?
Are you going to have a go at that?
Yeah, I mean, we do have a tougher recession plane next to open spaces. So basically, in the medium density zone, the recession planes are either eight metres or 12 metres. Next to open space, that's reduced to five metres. So there's a protection there that does control the scale of the buildings next to open space. We've got another piece of work that we're doing to actually analyse the actual open spaces themselves in more detail. In other words, do we need a more specific tailored approach to certain open spaces dependent on their size? So that works ongoing at the moment and we'll have that after the draft has gone out. But there is, if you like, this holding recession plane in the draft to deal with the sunlight impacts on open space.
If I can just add to that, for the city centre, in the operative plan, we have a sunlight protection standard to listed public spaces. And it's been carried into the draft district plan and we actually added more spaces to that list. So it's normally about a two hour window, normally about 12 to two. But for these bigger areas like Frankitts, it's 10 to four, for example.
And the only other point I'd add councillor is when developments occur adjacent existing open spaces, I've mentioned earlier on the session that often pre-applications are lodged and we have a team that wrap around those early ideas of that developer about how he or she might want to take the lot adjacent to that open space forward. But we consider both the matters Tim's talked about, but also passive surveillance is a really important thing as well. A lot of these at grade parks with single or only double story dwellings adjacent to it don't have great surveillance. And so we're looking very closely when these areas and around those parks develop that we try to create, you know, third, fourth and fifth story kind of setback, levels of surveillance of the park as well. So it's a design detail usually worked through in the consenting phase.
Okay, thank you. And one more, just noting, there are a lot of good developments starting to happen that, you know, go up against our, our amazing hills and the green space. But if, so if developers do want to apply, to do that, they just, even though a place might not be zoned for that kind of development, they still apply for a resource consent. Is that how that process works?
That's correct.
Thank you, that was easy then.
Cool, all right, thank you councillors for all your questions. And officers, sorry, I've still got some written ones to send through, but they're not urgent and can be dealt with at a later point. Um, right, Jan, is there something you wanted to say about the consultation process?
Yes, I've got about four slides here, just to run you through the, the roadshow and the collateral. So I'll just put it up on screen now. Okay. I thought I'd run you through the roadshow schedule first. I think you're all familiar with it, but we will be going to, we're starting on the second, a third November. We have our first one in Thorne and we're going to have two in each, in each sub, in each ward. There'll be, going to be, they're sort of set up like there'll be a welcome desk and then there'll be the three different areas for the district plan, for the let's get welly moving and for the bike network. The ones that are on the Saturdays are actually going to be slightly different because they're going to be run by let's get welly moving. That's going to be their open days and we'll, we'll be there. But there'll be quite a big emphasis, they're wanting to do quite a lot of graphics. And there will be, there's quite a lot of focus for them on those particular days. And the rest of them we will be running, they'll be probably a little bit more low key, where people will be just dropping by. And we're doing, we're doing lots of promotion through the campaign. So the usual channels are, you know, newsletters, lots of social media. We'll be setting up Facebook events, which we'd encourage you to share with your people in your ward. We've got a few, some also prepared for COVID because levels, because levels can change at any stage. So we have got, we'll go online if we're not able to go ahead with the roadshows, but fingers crossed we will. We're also looking, we had to sort of consider the capacity for all the venues. So most of the, most of them are from 30, I think the list is 35. Some of the, for instance, the Loas and Fishes can accommodate 100, that's with social distancing. And then all the usual protocol applies with mask wearing and, and signing in. We will have security guards there just to make sure that that happens. What else? We're also, aside from the road, the roadshow, we'll also be doing, you know, meeting with community professional groups. We've got 23 of those already set up. Some of the, most of them are in place now, I've just got a few more to confirm. Perhaps I can open up to questions for the roadshow before I go on to the collateral?
Sure, that's a good idea. Um, councillor Day.
Kia ora, thank you. Um, yeah, so my question was just, and I think it might come under the professional groups, but just wanting to check that you're doing something for both of our community boards. So it's our community board and the Makaroa Hauri community boards.
Yes, we have got those scheduled.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Um, can we get a list of those community group meetings and when they are, please?
Sure, we'll send them out to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand that we like the spatial plan, you'll put up community meetings as well on the list?
Yes, they'll all go up.
Yeah, councillors, I think if you recall, I sent it earlier, I'm not just advising you about how the Q and A will roll and of course going into the consultation period. But those attachments I put in my email, of course, were still working draft. I made that point in, in my email. But Jan and the team have refined those and added to them quite a bit. So we'll, once we've got a couple more dates to land and, and, and groups to land, we'll send out the more complete list.
And when will that be, sorry Liam, approximately?
Probably by middle of this week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, Jan, I'm usually very relaxed about appearing in public and like to be visible. But obviously that meter of the MP, terrible business in the UK, second in five years, might sharpen our thinking a little bit on that. So it's good to hear you've got security people. So presumably they are, have a little bit of training that if anyone was to be violent or overly aggressive, that would be dealt with.
Yeah, councillor, look, a lot of our engagement consultation staff, in fact, all of them do, including some of the planners, because that's the nature of our roles. We are all trained in dealing with difficult people, I think is the course it's called. And that is effectively our, our first avenue, if you like, on how to manage people in that sense. John might have something else to contribute as well. But the other thing is those larger venues in particular, including the launch event, are all quite tightly orchestrated due to, one, COVID restrictions, but they're also public venues and they have their own rights, some security aspects to it.
Just with the draft spatial plan, we did have a security guard at least, at least one venue, just in case. Because sometimes you get a bit of a sense that something might be a bit more difficult, that particular meeting. So we can easily organise that again.
Yeah, it wasn't so much about people being difficult because they don't like our plan. I don't mind people being difficult. It's just about just being a bit aware around extremist attacks, that kind of thing was more given, now had another one. Okay, councillor Phone.
Kia ora and thanks again for the work on this. So two questions, I just want to check in. Just in regard to Newtown, they will particularly be impacted quite heavily by the draft district plan, the cycle way project and the let's get welly moving. So I know we've got one session there. Were you planning to talk to the residents association at all? Or is there any other ideas about how we can engage the community there? And another question on business groups, I just felt they looked quite light. So I wondered if it was possible to add in groups like Sustainable Business Network, Sustainable Business Council, the Maori Business Network and the Pacifica Business Network?
I'm sorry, I'll just go back to the first question. We, we're going to begin doing a combined residents association and workshop sometime and probably in the first two weeks of the consultation, we're just trying to lock a date in a moment for that. At this stage, we don't, haven't got any specific Newtown, but if we, I don't know whether we would want to do that at some stage, but we probably will if there's a need.
There's a Newtown session, Salvation Army, is it?
Yeah, so the Newtown session on, is going to be part of the let's get welly moving. And it will be a full, fairly full day that day. And we encourage we'll be suddenly reaching out to all our people in Newtown and residents association, letting them know that it's on and that's an opportunity to come and talk to the officers.
The last question councillor was asking was the sustainability groups and networks. Do we have a specific one relating to those? Yes, sorry Laurie, you also mentioned Pacifica there, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
And Maori Business Network.
It's just a few more business network groups. I think I noticed them generally missing off council approaches. So yeah, I just wondered if we could maybe broaden our business networks and then, yeah, just have a wider opportunity to see.
I think what we'll do, I mean, we have those networks and the context behind them. But of course, everyone's can turn up to all of these locationally specific sessions anyway. So I think councillor, it might be best, we'll send an email out because we're already pretty chockeroo. I think we're right, redlining as it is, aren't we, team in terms of staff and venues frankly? Venues have been quite difficult to, to happen. So what we'll do is we'll take those four or five entities you mentioned and we'll make sure they're invited to the specific areas.
I guess I'd just say, sorry, sorry Liam, that the chamber is always approached, but the chamber isn't the only business network, you know? And so we, yeah, we could do with getting a broader view. So just a long term comment, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, can I just ask about the, the community meetings as well? There definitely are some communities which are possibly more heavily impacted than others. Like so, you know, Mount Vic is obviously got lots happening as well and, and Johnsonville and Tawa. So I, I hear that people are stretched, but I'm just wondering if we can do some extra, make an extra effort out there. Now, obviously the ward councillors will be able to help too. But I think there is an expectation that we will see people where there is, where there is a significant impact.
Yeah, look, I think our advice would be we've, we've got it covered councillor. If there is found to be a need post the draft plan consultation and the issues are particularly pronounced, whether it's lack of clarity or, or just an issue's popped up through the process, then we'll try to, to help and, and hold potentially a follow up session with those interest groups. But I think we're very, very confident that we've got most, if not all, angles covered in this sense. But you know, as I say, I think we need to go through the consultation process and see what that throws up. And if we need to do a deep dive in certain areas, then we'll try to.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, Liam, that's the council official perspective, but also we try to listen to our communities and hear what they've got to say, which might not be the same. So if you could just keep having a conversation about that, I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Are there any other questions on this part? Otherwise, we will go to the collateral. Cool. Diane, sorry, have you still got your hand up or is this? New question?
No, sorry, I'll take my hand down.
Okay, lovely, thanks. All right, Jan.
Okay, on to the next slide. I think you, believe you, Kate sent through the info sheets to you on Friday. We've also put them downstairs and, I mean, in the council room downstairs. So you've all got a pack with all the campaign, that our City Tomorrow campaign, the joined up one, and also the collateral, the info sheets. So they, you've got the 16 topics that also have a, they all have a QR code for the survey. So the QR code's not working yet, so the questions are still being developed. We should be finishing them this week. And we will be sending those out to the, info sheets will be going into libraries, community centres. We'll obviously be taking them out with us when we go out on the road to the roadshows and also have them online. We're also got a district, a couple of videos that are in production at the moment. One is what is the district plan? And another is how to make a submission. So they will be coming out about the time we go live on the, of the consultation. Just actually go on to the next slide. So that's a front of one of the info sheets, which you have seen, I hope. And this is the back where it's got the QR code. Any questions on those?
So someone with visual issues, will they be able to access this material?
Yeah, so we've got the, our friend of submitters, that's going to be available for people if they have trouble accessing the material that we've got out.
Well, I just meant, sorry, this is a very long ongoing issue that when we do produce material, people should be able to see it, not have to have someone explain what's in it. So have we thought about just from a design point of view, Jan?
Yeah, I think councillor, so there's a couple of, the team's just talking about a couple of ways we've factored this. And the friend of submitter, it's a service. So if you are visually impaired or impaired in any way to, that makes it unable, you've got unable to access the more conventional online or hard copy version of the plan, then you can call this number and this service walks you through your concerns and then how, and where you might like to make a submission. The other, you know, great thing about technology is that you often get a lot of these people who, who have these disabilities are able to access technology that allows them to read submissions for them. And then, as I said, the friends of submitter service allows them to access a, a service that, that, that can guide them in making a submission in whatever form they need.
Okay, that's probably another issue Liam, but it is about making sure that we are accessible to people rather than him, them having to sort of make themselves accessible.
The other point, the other point I'll just make there, it's Adam, is around the E-plan being screen readable as well. So as Liam explained, a lot of people are familiar with having their computer read to them if they cannot read the text. And the E-plan is fully compatible with a range of those systems. So they will be able to have their computer speak to them.
Right, councillors, other questions? Anyone got anything?
Looks great.
Looks very nicely designed, absolutely, and it's got nice clear language as well.
They are really, really helpful and easy to.
I agree, they were great, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great design team and great work from Charlotte here.
Yeah, my good on you. Right, any final questions before we let our busy team go and get back to all the other work they've got to do for this plan? Okay, all right, everyone, look, thank you so much for giving up your precious time. Thank you councillors for your questions and keep them coming through.
Thank you, honour, thanks councillors.
Looking forward to debate on Wednesday.
Yeah, great, awesome.
Thank you, thanks very much, cheers, bye.